Council, good to see you all. Nice to for us all to gather together. Good evening, staff and visitors. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the people who are watching us electronically. This is a study session of the City Council in the city of Waverly in the great state of Iowa. Today is Monday, November 24th at 7:00, and we are called to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the council, you have in front of you an agenda faithfully prepared for us by the city clerk. Is there a motion out there somewhere?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? This is our last meeting for our guest councilperson Gavin Stegge. Welcome back. Good to have you again.
Good to be here.
If you've got any questions or comments, let Carla know and she'll get my attention. Otherwise, we'll talk to you at the end of the meeting. Now is the time for public comments for items that are not currently on the agenda. Does anyone rise to speak? I see no one. That takes us on to item E, the study session calendar. We'll begin with the Waverly Chamber of Commerce and Main Street quarterly update to the council. Good evening. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, council and mayor. Chelsea Peterson, Executive Director, Waverly Chamber and Main Street. So my last visit here was August 18th. Since then, Main Street America was here on September 9th. Thank you all for your time for that visit. They are using a new accreditation platform online, so I do not have a final report on that visit. Once that is available, I will be sure to pass that along to you guys. We hosted a SBDC Emergency Preparedness Workshop for small business owners. It was very informational, lots of good stuff. I think to make it more effective for our small businesses, we need to have another workshop that's like a four hour maybe, so that they can leave with a completed emergency preparedness plan for their... They gave us the framework for it, but there was not necessarily any time. And with running a business, I know our entrepreneurs and our business owners are super busy, so I think that would be most helpful. So we'll look forward to doing that in 2026 for them to be prepared for natural disasters and anything of the sort. We applied for a $30,000 World Iowa Initiative grant, but were not selected. It was a very competitive grant, but we'll continue to look for other funding opportunities as well. We hosted our successful Weins and Steins fundraiser this fall and met our goal of $10,000. Those dollars are reinvested directly back into our program and the events and things that we host. And then also in October, we held a lunch and learn focused on different funding opportunities through SBDCI. So just having others in the small business industry within the state come and offer opportunities for small businesses. There were 23 people registered that was hosted here. Some got busy, but it was a pretty good turnout overall. And then we also piloted a new event, thanks to Mr. Bard Mackey, on the history and haunts. We had a nice new event in October that was a historic stroll through East Bremer Avenue. November 6th, we went to Des Moines and accepted a $100,000 Challenge Grant for 123 East Bremer. So because of your support, in 2023, that application was not successful and it... We needed diversified funding, so that was a resolution that you passed for your support for that. And so thank you. Tim Locke and Downtown Dreamers will begin work on a two-bedroom, two-bath apartments above the old Downtown Dreamers Mercantile Market. Looking forward to having that get underway. It's a two-year project, so November 2025 is when that officially starts, and then it is due to be completed November of 2027. The developers' goal is to have that completed within a year. So that makes us two for two for Main Street Iowa grants this year with the Open for Business with Z's and then the $100,000 Challenge Grant. So awesome and great to see the reinvestment in our downtown. Looking ahead, we'll be launching a new Waverly Chamber and Main Street website to better tell our organization's story and to highlight our member businesses. We are finalizing the 2026 budget, sending that for board approval, and again, are actively working to just diversify fundings, watch for grants, and look at different ways, different partnerships. And then for 2026, historically, winter is slow for our businesses, and so we have a paid marketing initiative that will roll out first quarter of 2026. It's important that'll be with TV and streaming ads, social media, and more to help retrain our current residents and others that Waverly is open and to come back to Waverly. Obviously, the bridge has changed consumer behaviors, and so we need to bring them back, invite them back to our downtown. So that is what I have looking forward to next quarter. And then, of course, we're planning ahead to 2026, but we will celebrate the season, Christmas greetings on Main, December 11th, with the official ribbon cutting and grand reopening of the Bremer Avenue Bridge.
You didn't mention the Great Pickle Hunt.
I did not mention the Great Pickle Hunt. That is currently happening with... And so go hunt for the pickle in different businesses, get your passport signed, and then turn it in for a gift, and then there will be three large giveaways courtesy of Denver Savings Bank, December 31st.
Council, do you have any questions?
Doing a great job.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item number two under the study session. That is Waverly Leisure Services Commission's annual report. Please step to the microphone and introduce yourself and good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sonya Bodine. I've been on the council... Or council, the commission for four years. The mission statement is, "We believe in making the good life better by providing safe, modern, well-maintained, and aesthetically pleasing environments for the community of today and tomorrow, and we always want you to leave it better than you found it." Our monthly meetings are the third Thursday of the month at 7:00 right here in the chambers. Our members are Brittany Kniper, which is chair, Randy Nyandorf, vice chair, Cherie Human, Joel Johnson, Tara Winter, myself, Derek Solheim, and council liaison is Julie Myers. Do you need to put it on the screen? Okay. The powers and duties, we recommend to the city council a budget providing for operations for the cemetery, swimming pool, civic center, and the public ground maintenance. We do a lot of recommend... More recommendations to the council for fees for certain activities for the leisure services, operation of all functions under the jurisdiction of the leisure services, and the long-term capital improvements program. And we also like to promote the leisure service activities which will benefit the citizens of Waverly. The leisure service staff consists of Garrett of 19 years, Ashley Lickte, three years, the government facilities manager Shane Potest, Dustin Molstad, civic center custodian Steve Angstman, public grounds manager Paul Cheville, Parks Ground Maintenance Specialist Cody Hyman, Parks Ground Maintenance Specialist Steve Henley, Athletic Fields Maintenance Greg Wessendorf, Cemetery Specialist Chris Stafford. We have 17 seasonal staff and one intern. The responsibilities are the parks, the cemetery, the pool, the civic center, dog park, forestry, trails, right-of-way, central business district, and public properties. The golf course and the pro shop have their own separate commission. We've had several accomplishments in the fiscal year. They hired Cody Hyman of Full Time Park. They completed the Phase Two of the park's shop, the upgrade and remodel. The kayak launch is ready at Pelican Park. It's used to access the water as well as fishing, and the Ridgewood Park is also... The kayak launch is also up and running at this time. We've had volunteers, the health city staff, for example, United Way of caring to help paint the Quanta storage shed, batting cage frames, and the paint was donated through the Paint Iowa Beautiful Grant. Other accomplishments, our sharing gardens and orchards of the fall of 2024. We had 15,426 pounds of produce for hungry families during the growing season. And then the gardens also reached over 104,000 pounds of produce since the beginning. And also, we prepared for hosting numerous public events, which are listed up on the screen, highlights our heritage days. The Bremer County Fair is in there because of the 2024 fiscal year. The Bucks Rugby, the Best Am Run, Oktoberfest, Art Walk, softball and baseball tournaments, flag football, church services, Waterloo Symphony, the nights at concerts at Coleman Park, and the Holiday on Main. In September 2024, we had volunteers from the WSR Middle School and the Trees Forever. They helped plant trees at North Ridge and many of the city's streets area around the school, and this was paid from a grant and donation money. In 2025, in May, the WSR Middle School and Trees Forever also had... Plant trees at the Prairie West Elementary School. And they also organized a hands-on chainsaw safety and tree pruning and felling class, and it was attended by over 20 people from area entities. Parks, we assist with the Candlelight Walk. November 2nd, 2024, we had 146 participants and 10 dogs. On the rail trail, they completed the Baskin's Creek, the Simmons Run, Cemetery Run, and the Prairie Run Bridges. And they also replaced out-of-service drinking fountain along the trail. They managed over 60 planters and baskets and all the holiday decor. And they cleared snow and managed over 10 miles of sidewalk and 14 miles of recreational trails. The installation of the all-inclusive playground at the Cedar River Park was completed, and the replacement of the First Home Playground, as you remember, was... That started on fire. Also at Jewel Park, they did a lot of updates, new basketball hoop climbing feature, which replaced a broken slide, and that project was partially funded with the help of the Bremer County Community Foundation Grant, and a new basketball hoop was installed at Willow Lawn Park. Power upgrades at Coleman Park were completed with monetary help from the Bremer County Foundation Grant and private donors of Oktoberfest. Phase Six of the Arlington Cemetery Monument Project was completed with 30 stones were fixed. Five new sections are going to be... Were surveyed and platted. They'll have over 2,000 grade spaces located mostly on the north side of the cemetery and will be open for sale in the next two years. We planted some shrubs. There's a new sidewalk between Section One and Cedar River Parkway with the help of Public Services. The picture up there is the southwest corner of Fourth and Cedar River Parkway where that sidewalk was done. And then Chris Stafford was hired for the full-time cemetery. They also worked with Lyman and Cindy Campbell and the local veterans, Waverly Exchange Club, to get flag flying, get a flag flying from the old pole in Block Four. It was also landscape. They tore out old landscape around the Veterans Memorial, gave it a new landscape with lights and plant material. The Civic Center repaired parts of the City Hall parking lot, resurfaced the walls in the Civic Center lobby in both hallways, new flooring, kitchenette, storage rooms, and the government specialist office. And also, they reconstructed the columns on City Hall, which is also in that picture. The Aquatic Center, that was passed in November with the referendum. The design and engineering were completed by JEO Consulting Group. Woodruff Construction is a general contractor for the project. Demolition started in June. We're hoping and expected to get it going in the 2026 season. Lot of challenges with leisure services, finding seasonal help. We had drought. We've had vandalism. We had rain days that made it hard for... To get all the sites mowed. They had to keep up with the tree watering and pruning, aging drinking fountains. Like I said, the fire that destroyed the First Home Park. And we've had breakdowns with the zero-turn mowers. Part of the exterior crypt wall collapsed in a storm. So it kind of goes on and on for the leisure services challenges. And as you'll see, these are our partnerships. These are not all the partnerships, but some of the prominent ones that work with leisure services. And we'd just like to say thank you. The commission recognizes the dedication and support of the city council to the activities and facilities the community has available for their leisure time. The commission hopes to continue to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Waverly by preserving the natural areas and the facilities for the citizens of today and the future. Is there any questions?
So which drinking fountain got replaced?
Along the rail trail. I do believe it's one by the gazebo.
Second Avenue.
There's one here by the gazebo and then also at South Riverside Shelter.
Okay.
And where are people driving in the cemetery? Like off the road, in between the graves, or...
It's mostly just off of the road and then, you know, kind of parking in the grass and those types of things.
Okay. All right. I really appreciate all that the staff does. I mean, we have a lean, lean staff, a lot of territory to cover. Every time I have people here from out of town, they just are raving about the beauty of the parks, the trail system, et cetera. So really appreciate the commission and the staff's efforts. I also want to give a shout out to Shane Potest, who's retiring. Isn't he at the end of December?
Yes, ma'am.
So I wish him the best in his retirement.
Anyone else?
Remind me again, how many parks do we have?
Parks or playgrounds, or you want everything?
Yeah. Of the various...
I believe it's 24 parks or green spaces that we manage, and then it is 14 playgrounds, I believe. I might be... Give me a plus or minus on both of those, but yeah.
Anything else, council? Thank you, Ms. Bodine.
Thank you.
That takes us to item three, an update on the new Aquatic Center. Come on, Garrett, make us happy.
This will go swimmingly.
Is that how we're going to start?
Leave it to Tim to go off the deep end.
All right, I'll just start talking. Here is a shot from about a week and a half ago. This is... The guy's actually out there pouring shotcrete or shooting shotcrete, making the walls. What we're looking at right here is the deep end. So what happens is this concrete gets sprayed or pumped through a hose, and they just sit there, go back and forth, back and forth, until it catches enough. I mean, it's all rebar and everything, and they're just like a typical wall, but then it all just stacks on top of each other, and they can form it however they need to. So that's just a shot of them doing that there on the deep end. Here is an aerial view of the same day when they're working on it as well. You can see them all over here. You can see how many people it takes to actually be working on it. You know, some holding the hose, some going through the trowel, some actually doing the spraying. So they're here. This is where the steps are. This whole area from here to here probably took about three hours to pour to get it all how they needed it to form. This is a picture from today, and so this is right where they just were, and you can see that this part's uncovered. This part has at least reached the first curing stage now. It will take a little longer to cure the entire way, but that's why this part's uncovered. So you can see the steps leading out of the pool. That's what they were spraying in that previous picture. Here's another overhead view. Again, this was about a week and a half ago, but you can see, I mean, the whole pool is formed. It just hasn't all been poured yet. So we're still waiting to pour this shallow area here, the zero depth in both spots, and then slide area and rest of this way over here. They do have these walls poured now. These were not poured in this picture, but the walls do go all the way around to about here now, and they still have to finish this. And then, once this stuff all gets done, they'll close this gap here and finish that Here's just another kind of neat overhead view. They're actually pouring part of the floor here. That's what this is. Here's the shot of the deep end from today. So that's from that first picture that we saw. These are the walls that they poured. This is also from today. This is in the zero depth area, and so they'll be pouring... They'll be pouring the floor concrete soon. The walls are done. You just can't see it's on the opposite side of this plywood. That's where the walls are for that. But they'll be pouring that. Each one of these pipes with the cap on, those are inlets that they have, so that's where the water rotates back through. And so like in the zero depth area, it all comes through these. Once you get into the deeper areas, I don't know if I have that picture. Throw this back on here. These are the inlets, once you get to the deep areas there, or deeper areas, I should say. So right in here, that is where the big plate, play equipment will go, the slide and everything that comes off of that slide. Here's just another shot of some more of the zero depth. This is where that little peninsula sticks out, but then we have some more water features back here, and then some more inlets as well. This is the concession stand area and guard room, and so this is just some of the plumbing that's been installed. They were expecting the block earlier last week. Has not shown up yet, so hopefully here in the next few days, we'll have block, and they'll start setting the block walls for this. And then, I should have mentioned back here. So that concession area is right here. Once all of this is poured, including the walls, then they'll close this off and they'll start the rest of the bathhouse. So they plan on still working on the bathhouse, probably in the next two to three weeks, they'll get started on that and work on that through the winter. Then, once spring rolls around, is when they'll actually pour all the areas around for the deck and everything. So they'll do the backfill and that kind of stuff over the winter, and then pour the deck in the spring. And here's just one of the backsides of the wall. This is actually where... Here's where the steps are, right here that we saw. So here, we've got some of the inlet lines going in, and then this is one of the places that the water actually comes out from the gutters to go back into circulation. So that's what that is. They're hoping to have the rest of the floors and walls poured in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we get good enough weather, they're able to do that, and we keep moving on. But anything I might be able to answer? Courtney, any questions? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Garrett. Thank you. That takes us to item F, reports from boards and commissioners. You have one report. It's from the Waverly Municipal Utilities. This is a written report. It was emailed to you earlier, and I think you have a link to it on the screen. Any questions or comments on the report from Utilities? That takes us to James, staff updates.
We have nothing to add, sir.
That takes us to item H, city council comments. We'll start as usual with councilperson Bergen.
Well, I would like to congratulate the Ortberg Football Team. We have another home playoff game this weekend, so that's always great for the community to bring people in, to enjoy the town of Waverly. I'm especially happy that all of those football fans who are going to be staying at the Cobblestone Inn can drive across our new Bremer Avenue Bridge to the football game. They won't get lost on the way. Hopefully, they'll be able to stop, you know, for dinner, enjoy all the lovely things our town has to offer. So let's be welcoming to Ortberg, and let's hope that Ortberg has a nice, long run in the playoffs, so we'll get many weeks of visitors coming. And then, anyone who wants to discuss city politics, I will be at the poorhouse after the meeting.
Thank you. Councilperson Myers?
Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and express great gratitude that we are going to have an open bridge.
Thank you. Councilperson Kengis?
Just echo Ms. Myers' thoughts. It's a great time of the year. Hope everyone gets a chance to be with loved ones or at least have some communication with people that are close to them, be thankful for the community that we live in, the country we live in, and look forward to the festive season.
Thank you. Councilperson Dranko?
Well, I know a lot of people have been following the progress of the bridge with a lot of interest, me included. I just want to point out, for those of you who have looked at the bridge the last couple of days, there are some woven wire fencing that's being installed on the east... I mean, on the north and on the south part of the bridge. That is not the finished fencing that will go into the bridge. There are railings that will be installed. The fencing is going in so that when we are able to allow people to cross the bridge, they won't fall into the river. So just to make sure that you realize, that fence that's there is not a permanent feature of the bridge.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilperson Rothie?
Nothing for me.
Councilperson Wolf?
Nothing for me today.
Well, guest council... Well, guest councilperson Gavin Stady. This is your last chance.
It is my last chance. I'll make it short, this is a three-short reading, so I'll be happy with that. I just like to thank everyone for having us, or having me be on the council, even though I technically don't even live in the city limits anymore. But I've been in this town, I went to Ortberg in 2002, and I never left Waverly. So I've been here now officially, well, longer than I was in my hometown. So Waverly is technically, I guess, my new, my new hometown. So I just appreciate it and the work that's being done. And obviously, I'm a builder in town and build houses and commercial projects, and one of the things I just wanted to mention briefly, just something for the city council and the city administration maybe think of for in the future, is you always talk about affordable housing. That's always one of the things we, we go on. And the problem with affordable housing is it was, when the affordable was 200 grand, it cost 300, and when it was 300 grand, it cost 400, and we just see that. It's just the way it is. So my challenge to the, to the city is, is looking into ways, you know, some of the most affordable housing we have is the housing that is, is, that's already there. And maybe to look at how we can incentivize our current city people to build or move into the new housing that cannot be affordable, say, their second home, their third home. Because when the houses come up in the market that are already existing, that are in those budgets, that we can't hit new, then those are the affordable houses. I mean, it's just the thoughts, the ideas, no one's doing it right or wrong, just some ideas. Can we incentivize our current ways of, you know, build, instead of just thinking always the, the affordable homes, is can we get the people out of the affordable homes, move them into their second or third home with some incentives, whether it's tax abatement or whatever, come up with your, your own ideas. But that's just a thought that I've had, and, you know, we're building, I'm working on or completed nine homes in the last, well, right now, currently, and none of them are in the city limits of Waverly. And not saying there's not houses being built, there's more builders than just us, but we've been, oh, pre-2021, we've built a ton, tons of houses in the city limits of Waverly, and it's just been tough since then, and we're, we're still building them. They're just, you know, within the hour of this community. So some are just on the edge of the city limits, so we're right there. But just, just throwing out a challenge that, you know, maybe it is hard to hit them. Every time we talk about it, since I've been here, it's always been, news been 50 to 100 grand more than, if you can build, I get that all the time, if you can build something for 200, if you can build something for 300, it'd be a done deal. Well, maybe it's figuring out a way to get the people to move out of those houses into the next step. So just some thoughts, and I, like I said, I appreciate the time and being here, and I'm glad I overworked a month of it, so that was good.
Thank you, Kevin. That brings us to item I, mayor's comments. This Thursday is Thanksgiving. Awful lot of our citizens, we're spending a lot of time with their relatives, a lot of time with their in-laws, hours and hours with their in-laws. Thinking of that, Waverly, be kind. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we are adjourned.